And as she comes up, Coach Keats, his best accomplishments didn't happen during games, didn't happen in practices. It happened during those nine years when he allowed us, as staff members and friends and players, to join hands with him and fight him this fight and the courage. Cheryl's story was one that when I heard it, for those who know me, I'm not afraid to cry in public and hope to help you cry tonight of the story of her son Alex, as he battled addiction. But that battle and that struggle, that hurt to ensure that no other parent, regardless of your zip code, regardless of your social economic status, no other parent should feel like there's a stigma attached to mental health. And so it's okay to not be okay, Cheryl. Thank you for your service. And I'm trying to read this script well, and it's not looking like the one I read earlier today, so you all are gonna have to bear with me as we deliver, we get through this. So Jerry, I'll ask if you'll bring up the next thing that you're gonna bring, which will be some flowers. And these flowers are gonna go to, in my opinion, the brightest flower in this room, my rock, my best friend, my wife, Rachel. And Jerry, while I have you, if you don't wanna stand next to me, please, you've always been Jerry, how do you do it, Jerry? And I'm positive Jerry gets so tired of my phone calls every evening, calling and checking in, wearing all the YCA's and wearing our council robes. We work hard. We work hard for each and every one of you in this room. But we have one here that have a rule in my mind, it's forty-eight hours, you should get a call back or a response. And we get a lot of those. And Jerry is always working and working for the people. And so Jerry, I just wanted to take this time to thank you for your service to the city, for your commitment to me. And I had another gift for you, and I don't know what they're gonna bring this gift out for her. I hope they do. It's not on the script, but I really hope they do. It's not on the script. Well, now, now, now I have to tell you the whole story. Although this is gonna be a brief thing, because this is definitely for councilmember Stables, sure, not you, but I am a former educator, so I had you put artwork up all over the school, beautiful art, if you can appreciate art, okay? And so there was one that was placed in front of my office, and it said, "You better not make fun of this picture." And it was a little Rocket Man, the little, whatever that character is. And I thought it was the cutest thing, the funniest thing, and I wanted it. But so did Miss Jerry. And so as we were cleaning up, and she wanted to purchase that, because we were gonna make donations to the students for making those, I said, "No, Jerry, I'm taking this one." And I saw a little bit of disappointment in her eyes. But little did she know, that that picture was gonna be my gift to her. Plus, Jerry, I want you to know that the Freeman girls and all the Freeman kids, we all decided to chip in, birthday money and everything else. And so you're gonna get fifty dollars for each Freeman kid for your cruise this fall. But you have to take it with you, okay? And so I guess that brings me now to my speech. And this was gonna be a tough one. I wanna thank each of you all for coming tonight. And we'll begin with, "To laugh often and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, to earn your appreciation of honest critics and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a bit better, whether by a healthy child, a gardening patch, or a redeemed social condition, to know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived. This is to have succeeded." Ralph Waldo Morrison. To Mayor Lyndon Curry, and one congratulated on the great football game, the boy beating up on my godson, we're gonna get him next year, no worry. To Marilyn Donadie, congratulations. To my good friend Sheriff TK Waters, our constitutional officers, all dignitaries, family, friends, guests, thank you for sharing this moment with us. This evening, we gather, as a city, to close the chapter on one moment of our city and to start another. To my friend Ron Salem, thank you for being the strong vice president, and congratulations again on being our incoming president. I look forward to serving with you in the coming year, and I believe you are the steady man that our council needs during this transport of time in our city. And before I continue, no marked remarks are complete without acknowledging my rock, my wife, Rachel, the best coach in the house. Public service can be taxing on families, and in many ways, they are the unsung heroes for all of us who choose to serve. Rachel, you cover countless practices and games, sometimes with a baby attached to your body, for our girls. You got them to every doctor's appointment, every dental appointment, all school activities, all while working their full-time job as a teacher and giving birth to our son TJ, who was in desperate need shortly after he arrived. While there's no doubt in my mind, you are the MVP. For sixteen years, America soon to be seventeen, and nineteen years total, you have been my everything. And this past year has put our family through struggles, struggles we would have never dreamed of, and one that I haven't shared much publicly. When TJ was born, he was very sick, immediately rushed in at you. It was the darkest hour in our family's time. And it made the day-to-day politics of this council seem so small, even though a topic like redistricting was such a big topic going out throughout our community. But you, Rachel, in so many ways, shine bright for all of us. And now our family of seven, we're all thankfully healthy and thriving. Thank you. To my daughters, Evelyn, Ebi, Taryn, Patricia, Lindy, you girls are always begging, Daddy, please, no dad jokes. Well, guess what? I got some bad news for you. So girls, I'll ask you this. What's the best way to watch a live finish tournament? I'll tell you, a livestream. I'm not done. I'm gonna embarrass them as much as I can. This is my last time. There's another one, girl. So what kind of music do Killer Wells listen to? Orchestra. Now, I'll finish with one more, and we'll get back to business. Why do seagulls fly over the sea? Because if they flew over the bay, they would be bagels. Yes. But seriously, girls, I live for you. And I am so honored to be your father, and to watch each of you grow up into the women that God created you to be. Each of you have already been excellent big sisters to TJ, and I love you more than you will ever know. And for the first time in the many years that I've done this, I did it without crying. So I promise. To my assistant Jerry, thank you for being my gatekeeper and my shield. This past January, mark one year since you lost your soulmate, Al. You battled through so much, and yet through your grief, you only poured more back into the service to this city. Al's spirit lives on with us, and his presence surrounds us daily. And the red birds that we see flying, they remind us of him. Of course, we must acknowledge our city's staff and workers, public works, parks and regs, planning, Office of General Counsel, Legislative Services, auditors. Your hard work doesn't go unnoticed. And for that, I wanna say thank you. I can't say it enough. Thank you again for all of your support. And finally, to my colleagues on the council, thank you for entrusting me to lead. My desire in every situation will be to continue seeking truth, as it is a divine attribute and the foundation of every virtue. A year ago, when I took this role as a council president, I said that next year would not be an easy one. Boy, did we ever deliver. But despite the political nature of key moments, we rose above it to complete the work of the people. Some of the things we were able to complete, Councilmember Boylan, in his steady work leading the Critical Quality of Life Issues Special Committee Task Force that tackled affordable housing, which we had five hundred and eight new affordable housing units come onto the market. When we look at access to healthcare, this body, we, ten million dollar investment towards a ninety million dollar improvement plan with the help of the administration to redo our trauma one center at UF Health, named in honor of Dr. Leon Haley, who our city lost tragically. This trauma center is one of seven in the state, the largest employer of African Americans, and one of our largest teaching institutions. But more importantly, it also ensures that those who face some of their most traumatic medical emergencies, as well as those who are in our image of care and awesome in our communities, will have equal access to a state-of-the-art medical facility. Homelessness. Councilmember Boylan, your work in this area yielded a final report detailing the next steps that we can take as a city, so that we will never leave behind our neighbors who are experiencing life's greatest challenges. I wanna thank the administration for their collaboration when we secured a generational, once-in-a-generation opportunity to bring a satellite campus from the University of Florida downtown to Jacksonville, which will be a huge boon for downtown Jacksonville. That will transform and make up our city for decades to come. But I would be remiss if I did not mention as well the great work that our current university, our local University of North Florida, Edward Wardes University, Jacksonville University, and FSDJ, our higher ed system here in our city, I would put it against any in our country. With the support of our colleagues, my colleagues, we passed bills enacting a pilot program, creating a vendor lab that was a free certification process for small business owners that better prepared them to utilize our city's JSEF, which is Jacksonville Small and Large Business Program. This pilot's proof of work proved that it could reduce the burden on local business owners and generate genuine economic development jobs for this city. And I'm proud to say that seventy-five percent of small businesses that went through this pilot program became JSEF certified. The council continued to partner with the Mental Health Awareness Campaign with Hearts for Minds, led by Cheryl Johnson and Gina Horsen, to finally break the stigma of mental health. We passed one of my key priorities, Jump Jacksonville Upward Mobility Program. This is a first-class kind of apprenticeship program for the city of Jacksonville. In partnership with the Kids Hope Alliance, this new program will invest millions directly into career pathways. I have the privilege every day of waking me up and working for one of the greatest companies in this city, I think, in the country, at Miller Electric. And I have the pleasure, when I work for Miller Electric, to go into schools and to really practice out our core values, to look for attracting talent, developing, amplify, retaining talent. And as I'm out daily visiting with youth, and I kept town from January to March, it was well close to three thousand students just in that time period, I would always ask a student that's facing some type of challenge, what do you think would be the best way for you to break through this cycle? Whatever it may be, the cycle of positive crime, whatever that surrounds me, not without, beyond a shadow of a doubt, they're always saying, a job. And that was the emphasis of my journey to jump. So I can offer those students a job, but as we say with Miller, it's a job that leads to a career in the trades. And I will say this, and I hope many of you in this room will feel the same way, because we all know that trades that have jobs that lead to a career can really be a game changer for them. And imagine when we go and speak before these students, these young men and women, we look them in the eyes, and we encourage them to go into the workforce, into the trades. And now that we can say these four statements to them, which oftentimes I hear and I say, we can look at them and we can say that it is better to be seen than viewed. It is best to be spoken to instead of spoken over, recognized instead of being identified, here to be acknowledged instead of being accused. My colleagues, we did this. And we did this all while still opening additional three fire stations, with four more coming online, fully funding law enforcement, providing an additional fifty million dollars for our park system, and passing the first property tax cut in years, providing needed relief for Jacksonville homeowners. My colleagues, we did all of this. And we did it without pitting various groups within our communities against each other. We addressed tough issues with conviction, respect for each other, and respect for those who come to share their opinions. I committed that to you as your council president, to lead with compassion, to lead with respect for the process, but modeling a firm but fair approach. And I am proud of the work that we did together. So I will close with this. Since we have been a team since day one, I wanna take the last few minutes to specifically acknowledge my teammates and to say one first word that comes to my mind. So the first one is Joyce Morgan, warm and polite. And Joyce, thank you, because that's what she did in the meantime, when we came to the podium. Thank you for always thanking everyone with your warm and loving smile. Councilmember Farrar, whilst he's sitting in the crowd, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your passion. Your passion for serving Jacksonville, it does not go unnoticed. Aaron Bowman, fearless. Captain, thank you for modeling to me what true fearless leadership looks like. As NCA, you invited me into every meeting that you held in City Hall. And true story, at the end of that meeting, regardless who was sitting at the table around the table, he would say, "So Terrence, what do you think?" To me, and true leaders are measured by the leaders that you have developed. Councilman Carrico, my brother. Our journey's first cross while serving his kids, serving kids and boosting up the next generation who are service in various organizations. It's been a privilege to watch you grow and expand your leadership. Councilmember Conver, committed. Your efforts to promote and fight for your council district are to be commended. Councilmember Boylan, process-oriented. Your way of thinking has become critical to how this council leads, and thank you for your friendship. Councilman Reggie Gaffin Jr., another one. I'm sorry. Seriously, welcome aboard. And I'll be happy to show you where the bathroom is when you get back. But in all seriousness, I wanna thank you, and I agree, and I know you agree, that you have big shoes to fill. I know I saw your father earlier, and I know you're up for the task. Councilmember Pittman, my sister. We both came to this council together, and you've never flinched in being a fighter every day for your community. Thank you for always caring and mentoring for homelessness and small business. Councilmember Toronto Clark Murray, impactful on CPAC. Your work in your district CPAC is to be commended, and I look forward to seeing you continue your work and your impact in your full term. Councilmember Brenda Preasley Jackson, unlikely ally. To say we maybe got off to the wrong foot, we'll probably be putting things mildly. But it's funny how service can bring people together to the greater good. And it's a unique blend of, in the right formula of time, love, and dedication to serving our city, can and how it will transcend political differences. You have been one of my strongest advocates on key issues, redistricting, Office of General Counsel review. But more importantly, thank you for your relentless prayers for my family when TJ was fighting for his life. I will never forget that. And I thank you, and I look forward to seeing what the future holds for you. Councilmember Beckton, LUZ extraordinaire. Your attention to detail and persistence always got the job done. Councilmember White, the Godfather. Calm, cool, collected problem solver. I am genuinely looking forward to serving in your leadership in the years to come. Councilmember Rory Donan, service. You are in my family and my prayers every night as you answer the call to serve our country. Thank you for that. And to all who serve, thank you for your service. Councilmember the Forward Community, thank you for the four years of the service in the council and accepting my offer to chair of one of our committees. Your counsel for District Fourteen impresses us all. Councilmember Salem, prepared. Mr. President, you without a doubt are one of the most prepared members I have ever seen in action. I never had a doubt when I saw you rise to speak. And when you would ask a question, that you already knew the answer. I look forward to a greater year in your leadership. Councilmember Howland, rising star. You have quickly proven that you belong here. Your impact in this city will grow in the years ahead. And my good friend, Councilmember Carlos Chin, public servant. Thank you for being one of the first people to ever sit down with me and to meet with me as I was trying to learn more about the elected office and politics in general, and for insuring my house. And finally, Councilmember Nuvi, trailblazer. You are a mentor and a friend. It was an honor to be your vice president, and I thank you for blazing the trail for the next generation of leaders who look like you and me. That's true. So to each of you, thank you. Thank you for your patience with me. Thank you for your support in addressing the issues that are placed before this body. And thank you for putting yourselves forward to serve. And now, as I've done in the conclusion of many of my speeches, where I ask all of you to join me in prayer. And it's usually the prayer of J-Baz, when we seek God's blessing to enlarge our territory, keeping His hand upon us and keeping evil away so that we may not cause pain. Tonight, I'll choose to end with this blessing. And now, may the Lord keep you and bless you. May His face shine upon you, be faithful to you, and give you peace. May God bless you all in the grace of your task.
Council President Freeman, thank you for outstanding service to the citizens of Jacksonville, DeBolt County. Hard work, dedication, commitment, having it on a notice, and your colleagues and the community, thank you for your steadfast leadership service, unwavering commitment to the city of Jacksonville. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, the Honorable Anthony Salem, with the Fourth Judicial Service Court of Florida, will swear in Randy White as Vice President for the 2023-24 council year. And will the Honorable Randy White and Julie White, please come forward.
Are you solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
Am I duly qualified?
I am duly qualified.
Do I hold office?
Do I hold office?
Under the Constitution of the State?
Under the Constitution of the State.
Or the Charter?
Or the Charter.
Or the Charter?
Or the Charter.
For the city of Jacksonville?
For the city of Jacksonville.
I will support?
I will support.
Protect?
Protect.
Defend?
Defend.
And honor?
And honor.
The constitutions?
The constitutions.
Governments?
Governments.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the United States?
The United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
I will support?
I will support.
Protect?
Protect.
Defend?
Defend.
And honor?
Honor.
Charter?
Charter.
Ethics laws?
Ethics laws.
And other ordinances?
And other ordinances.
Rules?
Rules.
Regulations?
Regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville?
Of the city of Jacksonville.
And I will well and faithfully?
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties? Of City Council Vice President?
City Council Vice President.
On which I am now appointed.
Of which I am now appointed.
So I will be honored.
I don't have as near as many pages as Terrence did. I wanna thank you for being here this evening as we saw the installation, excuse me, of your city council leadership for 2023 and 2024, the city vice president, be able to continue my nearly four decades of service to the city of Jacksonville. I want to take the opportunity to recognize several people in the audience and on the stage, first my wife Julie, for forty-five years standing beside me. To my daughters, Christy and Misty, and Justin Strick, Marcus, as well as our five grandchildren, Logan, Chandler, Piper, Bomber, and Boylan. These are you all a special place in the Lord. I wanna recognize Nancy, which is Logan's guest. My sister Connie, who is with us for the rest, my brother-in-law Mac, as well as my other brother-in-law, Sidney, which is retired JSO, and my entire JFRD, along with many nieces and nephews in the Lord. Also considered family, Randy Wise, his guest, the Firefighters Union President, Randy Reed, Steve Somers here somewhere, Chief Powers, Fire Chief, and his wife Robyn, has joined us also. I'd like Rebecca Hayden for the hard work she does and to keep me straight, which I tell you, it's hard to do. I'm honored to be with you tonight and humbled by the confidence my colleagues has placed in me. Tonight is an opportunity for us to bring attention to and recognize the work we do as a legislative body of the city. When I retired from JFRD in two thousand and eleven, after thirty-two years, I often wondered what I'd be doing, and I did not think I would be here. To the Doyle Bar, to friends like Sam, they put me in a position to be here, and I appreciate that. Well, without a doubt, with my time with JFRD certainly prepared me for the journey, and I don't believe I'd be standing here today without the friendships I've developed over the years. As your city council vice president, I'm eager to be working on slide council president Salem, as we embark on a new journey with your administration. We have a responsibility to represent the needs of our community, and I look forward to listening and continuing to bring fresh ideas to the city. Thank you again for allowing me to be with you today. And when Terrence mentioned the Godfather playing, I'm gonna let y'all know it's not bad, I mean. My wife don't let people say that, she thinks all God knows is bad stuff.
Is it okay if I put that on the news about the Godfather? It's good stuff. So sincerely, congratulations, Honorable Randy White, being selected by your peers to serve as Vice President. At this time, it's my pleasure to call forward the Honorable Anthony Salem to swear in the Honorable Ronald B. Salem as president for the 2023 and 24 Jacksonville City Council. President Desmond Salem, who's you, and Mrs. Nancy Salem, being escorted by their son Anthony Salem, please come forward.
Are you solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
Am I duly qualified?
I am duly qualified.
Do I hold office?
Do I hold office?
Under the Constitution?
Under the Constitution.
Of the state?
Of the state.
Or the Charter?
Or the Charter.
Or ordinance?
Or ordinance?
Of the city of Jacksonville?
Of the city of Jacksonville.
I will support?
I will support.
Protect?
Protect.
Defend?
Defend.
And honor?
And honor.
The constitutions?
The constitutions.
Governments?
Governments.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
I will support?
I will support.
Protect?
Protect.
Defend?
Defend.
And honor?
And honor.
Charter?
Charter.
Ethics laws?
Ethics laws.
And other ordinances?
And other ordinances.
Rules?
Rules.
Regulations?
And regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville?
Of the city of Jacksonville.
And I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully?
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties?
Of City Council President?
Of City Council President.
On which I am now appointed.
Which, um, that I...
Want to personally congratulate the 2023-24 city council president, Ron Salem. We wish you well on your upcoming year of leadership. And now, the Honorable Ronald B. Salem would like to make a special presentation. Will the Honorable Terrence Freeman, please come forward. At this time, Mr. Salem is going to make a presentation of the council president gal, and prepare to give his remarks as council president for 23 and 24.
I'm gonna read this.
I'm going to read this. Presented to Michael Terrence E. Freeman, City Council President, 2022-2023. Appreciation of the outstanding leadership, innovation, dedication, and courage you have demonstrated for your term as Jacksonville City Council President. The impact of your commitment to serving the citizens of Jacksonville and improving the quality of life in our city will be long lasting and beneficial for us all. We also have a special gift here. This flag was flown over City Hall at St. James' Building on June 20th, 2023, and honor Council President Terrence E. Freeman's dedicated service to the Jacksonville City Council July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, presented by myself. I have my own speech, so I want to... Colleagues, Father Command, Dr. Golden, and fellow members of the Jacksonville community, I'm truly honored to stand before you today as your newly elected Council President. First and foremost, I want to extend a warm welcome to our new Mayor-elect Dean. I look forward to working together on all the projects making headlines today. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the immediate and extended family that I have with me tonight, including my son, Judge Anthony Salem, who performed the swearing in this evening. It is because of their support that I am standing before you this evening, and I'm grateful to each of you. I must also express my gratitude to my colleagues on the council who have entrusted me with this great responsibility. I'm pleased to be fair and attentive to all your voices as we work together towards our shared goals. It is important to me that everyone feels heard, seen, and included in our discussions and decision-making. I know that we each bring unique perspectives and strength to the table, and I'm committed to finding solutions that benefit all of Jacksonville. I would also like to thank outgoing President Terrence Freeman. Terrence, you guided us through a very tough year these past 12 months, and we tackled many challenges our city faced like we did yesterday. You led by example with a calm and reassuring voice. The teacher, coach, and trainer who helped us get through those times, and we celebrated many victories together. Examples that come to mind are your work on the jump program, putting our youth and future generations at the forefront of your priorities. We concentrated on economic growth while focusing on workforce development and building long-lasting, strong community partnerships. Through some of the darkest days of your personal family life, you led with compassion and conviction. You brought us together, unified us as a body, and I was proud to have served as your Vice President. Finally, I'd like to thank one last person here this evening, my executive council assistant, Nikki Adams. She was the blonde that came out. Nikki has been with me from the beginning of my time over at City Council. She is, there she is. Step down, Nikki. She has truly been amazing. She has truly been an amazing E.C.A., and I appreciate all she continues to do to maintain order in my council office. Before I go into detail about my upcoming year as Council President, I wanted to share a little bit about myself and my background. My parents immigrated from Ramallah, Palestine in the late 1940s. I was raised in northern Illinois. I got it. On the west side of Jacksonville, I'm the youngest of three brothers. We were raised in a environment where we had several Ramallah families living close by, which allowed me to appreciate my Arabic background. However, it was important to my parents that we melded in American society, so I had many other friends. We had the Inzmenures, Lutens, Moores, Gillespie's, and others, which created a special environment for me. We played sports in the four-corner parks, where trees served as bases in baseball, and out-of-bounds workers in football. We played corkball on Lambo Avenue, where we taught them prior to broodstick, cork, and white adhesive tape. It was a wonderful place to grow up. I was a product of the public school system and went on to graduate from University of Florida. My first job was an assistant professor at the University of Mississippi in 1980. I recognized almost immediately that I missed home and wanted to return to Jacksonville to raise a family. My parents also taught me the importance of civic involvement, so it was not long before I became involved in my community and professional organizations. This involvement sparked my interest in government, which led my first campaign in 2019. I'd now like to discuss several initiatives I intend to pursue in the next year. My first initiative is to the newly elected members of our city council. As you begin your term, I want you to know that I am fully committed to ensuring your voice is heard and that we remain focused on the goals and objectives that you envision for the neighborhoods that make up your new districts. The character of our neighborhoods is what makes our community unique, and I'm committed to working with each of you to bring your vision to reality. Second, supporting our first responders will always be a top priority for me. One issue related to that is the importance of a suitable location for the sheriff's administration building and the downtown jail. I strongly believe the current facilities have exceeded their useful life, and the location does not provide a favorable environment for inmates. My plan is to set up a special committee of the city council to explore location, cost, healthcare, mental health care, and other issues involved with relocating this facility. This public discussion will allow the needs of the public defender's office, state attorney's office, clerk of the court, and our judicial assistant to be involved. In addition, I will continue to emphasize our Mental Health Defender Program, or M-H-O-P, which allows offenders who have significant mental health issues to be diverted to the Soul Spire Center to receive a wide variety of services. This program has been extremely successful and has allowed us to gain significant information on the type of jail facility we need to build. My third priority involves renovations at the stadium. This project is vitally important for our revitalization efforts downtown. I'm looking forward to working with the new administration, my colleagues, to bring an agreement that is fair to the taxpayers and the jails. Fourth, the opioid crisis has ravaged our community over the last two decades, which has led to hundreds of deaths in DePaul County. The opioid settlement between the state of Florida, drug manufacturers and distributors has led to Jacksonville recovering a profit of $80 million over the next 18 years. I have introduced legislation that will allow a public service grant process to be used so that these funds can be utilized in our community to fund prevention, treatment, and intervention programs. This process should be operational in the third quarter of this year. The fifth initiative involves the issue of healthcare for the working poor and protection of our infants. Infant mortality rates across Jacksonville have been decreasing this past year, but there's still work to be done. Jacksonville has one of the highest infant mortality rates in the state of Florida with approximately seven out of 1,000 births dying in the first year. I believe that number is too high, and we need to work together to reduce that number. It is essential that we continue programs like the AMOM Mobile Pantry and expand this program to more than the 32208 and 09 zip codes. It is also fair that we continue to provide funding for the marketing campaign to help educate young women of the services available to them. My sixth goal, and there's only a couple more, is to continue our efforts in solid waste. The program recently implemented between the recycling partnership and the city of Jacksonville allows for the assessment of recycling bins to improve our recycling efforts. This program will continue through the end of 2023. In addition, a pilot composting program has been implemented in Jacksonville. These programs are reducing the waste in our landfills and enhancing our environment. I look forward to expanding these efforts for the benefit of our community in the next year. The seventh initiative involves our public school system. We have learned over the last several months how the issues in our schools impact our entire community. I have spoken to Chairwoman Coker, and we will be setting up regular meetings between the city council and the school board so we can educate each other on issues and allow our members to collaborate together. The last but not least initiative is to follow up on the critical quality of life issues that the council researched last year. Unless the recommendations was produced, that I did not 100% agree with. However, we did provide funding to initiate a process. Government must be involved in solving homelessness, healthcare for our citizens, and affordable housing. We will continue to move the ball forward on these issues in the coming year. Lastly, I'd like to mention two projects close to my heart that are more neighborhood-oriented. The addition of three holes in Blue Cypress Golf Course in Arlington is now planned. The addition of these three holes will enhance the overall park, but also allow Jackson University's golf team to use the facilities and be home to the expanded first tee program. The addition of first tee will usher in the construction of a clubhouse to accommodate those who have ridden in the course and will be a significant complement to the renewed Arlington CRA's work throughout the University Boulevard corridor. A second project, very close to me, is to showcase our beautiful city is the renovation of Henry Aaron Field at James P. Small Memorial Stadium in Dookyville. The transformation of this facility into a ready Major League Baseball field while maintaining its historic character will allow us to play major high school and collegiate level games. I hope one day it'll host a Major League Baseball game there. If you haven't visited the park, it's a gem in the city. In closing, I want to emphasize, while our priorities may differ from time to time, Jacksonville is a city full of incredible individuals who have a shared goal of making this city even better. I am proud to part with such a community, and I look forward to working alongside each of you to make Jacksonville the very best it can be. Thank you, and God bless.
So, Council President Salem, thank you. Thanks for your speech. Thank you for the invitation to serve as an E.C.A. I appreciate that. It's an honor. It's been a wonderful experience. So, as we get ready, prepare to adjourn this evening. Here's my request to you. I ask this of you, reflect on the future of our city. A city that can be great at this grade, and then reflect on the important contributions that each of you has made or will make toward enhancing our community's quality of life. Again, thank you for sharing this historical moment with Jacksonville City Council. We're going to have the benediction by Dr. Percy Golden. And we ask that you continue to enjoy festivities tonight by joining the elected officials and their families for a reception in the main hall immediately following the benediction. Dr. Golden.
Before I give the benediction, I want to take opportunity to again thank all of our newly elected council members again for the service that you're leading us to serve. I am certainly honored to be here. I'm on behalf of Randy White, Vice President. I'm honored to be here on his behalf to be a part of this great occasion. This night has been filled with a lot of joy, a lot of happiness, and I want to say to, again, all of those that are going to serve, to whom much is given, much is required. Benediction. For every ending, there's a beginning. For every memory, there's a dream ahead. As we conclude this ceremony, may we forever be on arm of what had happened in our lives out here tonight. May we walk with compassion and bring compassion to the center of our lives. May we cultivate the captivity and see humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat people, no matter how different, with reverence and deserve, they deserve. May we live with purpose bigger than ourselves, understanding that when we do, you will begin to transcend the limitation and discover yourself to be far greater than what you can ever imagine. May you recognize that our lives will be measured not by the titles that we carry, but by the number of hearts we heal and the lives we transform. Now, may the grace of God be with us forevermore, and may the peace of God rest upon each and every one of us. In Jesus' name, amen.